Good evening. As Chairman of the Hartford Board of Education, I hereby call to order the July 23, 2019 meeting. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. The Board Superintendent and I are pleased that you have joined us as we celebrate achievement, review information, and make policy decisions related to the effective operation of the Hartford Public Schools. This is a regular meeting, and all items that will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. As the Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve the problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the Superintendent. The monthly meetings of the Board are open to the public. They are the time when the Board conducts its business of governing the school system in a public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings with the public; therefore, comments from the audience will be confined to the time designated for the public to address the Board. The curm and courtesy are important elements in effective public meetings. Please silence your cell phones or communication devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated the proceedings be accurately recorded, I may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you have taken the time this evening to join us. We are very proud of this school system, and thank you for your interest in the Hartford Public Schools. Ms. Paguada will read this in Spanish.
Buenas noches. El presidente de la Junta de Educación de Hartford ha llamado a orden a esta reunión ordinaria de la Junta del 23 de julio del 2019. Damos una calidad bienvenida a todas las personas presentes y a nuestros televidentes. La Junta y la Superintendente se complacen que se han unido a nosotros a celebrar logros, revisar la información, y tomar decisiones relacionadas con el funcionamiento efectivo de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Esta es una reunión ordinaria, y todos los asuntos que serán discutidos o votados en esta tarde han sido notificados como lo requiere la ley estatal. Como Junta de Educación de Hartford, estamos aquí para establecer metas, escuchar los informes de la Superintendente, aprobar los presupuestos y contratos y nombramientos del personal, y establecer normas para el distrito. No estamos aquí para tomar decisiones administrativas o resolver problemas individuales. La administración es la responsabilidad de la Superintendente. Las reuniones mensuales de la Junta están abiertas al público. Son el momento en que la Junta lleva a cabo su tarea de gobernar el sistema escolar en un espacio público. Las reuniones regulares no son reuniones con el público; por lo tanto, los comentarios de la audiencia se limitarán al tiempo designado para que el público se dirija a la Junta. El decoro y la cortesía son elementos importantes en reuniones públicas eficaces. Por favor, silencie su teléfono celular o dispositivo de comunicación y absténgase de hablar mientras otros están hablando. Ya que es un mandato legal que los procedimientos sean grabados con precisión, es posible que tengamos que pedir orden periódicamente si el ruido interfiere con nuestras capacidades de grabación. Nos complace que se hayan tomado el tiempo para esta tarde para unirse a nosotros. Estamos muy orgullosos del sistema escolar y les damos gracias por su interés en las escuelas públicas de Hartford.
Si alguna persona necesita traducción en español, tenemos personal disponible. Alba está de pienda parte atrás. Pueden dirigirse a ella. If anyone needs Spanish language translation, we have personnel on the back. Alba's standing up. You can check with her, and she will help you.
We as a Board in collaboration with the Superintendent and District Leadership are committed to cultivating a culture of excellence at all levels of Hartford Public Schools. We thank you for taking the time to attend tonight's Board meeting. We appreciate you coming out to learn more about Hartford Public Schools and for sharing your thoughts and concerns. We have established a protocol to track and respond to concerns raised. We want you to know that we have taken your concerns seriously, and to that end, we will have staff available for immediate follow-up if follow-up is required. After you have finished speaking, a staff member will come up to you, ready to take down your information. They will follow up with an immediate response within 48 hours. As a reminder, you have three minutes to speak. At the two-minute mark, Ms. Santiago will ring the bell, letting you know that you have one minute left. At the second bell, please wrap up your comments. Now, Ms. Paguada will read this in Spanish.
Nosotros, la Junta de Educación, en colaboración con la Superintendente y el personal del distrito, estamos comprometidos a cultivar una cultura de excelencia en todos los niveles de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Les agradecemos que se hayan tomado el tiempo para asistir a la reunión de la Junta esta noche. Les agradecemos por su participación y su deseo de aprender más sobre las escuelas públicas de Hartford, y también por compartir sus pensamientos y preocupaciones. Nosotros tomamos sus preocupaciones muy seriamente y hemos establecido un protocolo para el seguimiento y respuestas e inquietudes planteadas. Tenemos personal disponible para seguimiento inmediato para los casos que lo requieren. Una vez que usted haya terminado de hablar, un miembro del personal estará disponible para tomar su información. Esa persona investigará su caso y se comunicará con usted dentro de 48 horas. Les recomendamos, recordamos, perdón, que tienen tres minutos para hablar. Cuando hayan pasado dos minutos, la señorita Santiago sonará el timbre dejándole saber que le queda un minuto. Al segundo sonido, por favor, termine su comentario.
Good evening. I'm here to speak on behalf of the children and families at Global Communications Academy. Our children aspire to do well because of our collective efforts as educators to invest the best we have to offer. Mr. Huberins is one of those best we have to offer our children. During his time at Global, Mr. Huberins has been a stellar educator, going above and beyond his job description to make sure that children are exposed to and experience the best education available. He wants our children to succeed. The Hartford Public Schools' decision not to accept the recommendation given by the interview committee to appoint Mr. Huberins as Assistant Principal has been devastating. This choice is one that will disconnect him and his influence from children that have come to appreciate his unique style of instruction. We are here to make you aware that Mr. Huberins' presence and relationship with our children and their parents has made the children better students and given them new hope in education. Destroying that relationship will not only interrupt the advancements made by our children, but will also interfere with the overall school culture and the excellence that Mr. Huberins has worked so hard to foster. We are asking this administration to consider the grave damage that will transpire as a result of this disconnection. Our job as educators is to find the right fit for our students. Once found, cultivate those relationships for the benefits of students' development. We have found that in Mr. Huberins. Not having Mr. Huberins as our Assistant Principal, everything that the Hartford Public School claims about its care for students would be proven otherwise. Please allow Mr. Huberins to stay at Global as an AP, the position he was accepted for by the interview committee. Please do it for the sake of our children.
Giovanni Jones.
Just a question. Okay. Before I start, I don't want anyone to confuse my passion for anger. I'm here for the betterment of the students that I went to school with. So I'm Giovanni Jones. I'm a 2017 alum from Global Communications Academy. I'm currently a junior at Trinity College studying sociology and legal studies. I'm here to speak on the need for proper administration for Global Communications Academy. Brandon Huberins has been an employee of the school since I was in sixth grade, so I think he's going on his eighth year now. Mr. Huberins mentored young men and women of Global Communications Academy. As soon as he came, he started programming. I was in his etiquette group all the way up into high school. He did various small groups for mental health with Ms. Clark, and that just really helped my mental health and made me feel more comfortable in the school. He was always someone that could connect with students on a personal level and also a professional level, which gave students someone to give respect to and allowed for students to have someone in the school that they can trust. Something that happened in May, my sister also goes to Global Communications Academy. She was in a situation where she was getting bullied that whole week, and one day she called me from the main office crying, and I'm like, "Why are you crying? Why are you crying?" She's like, "Oh, I don't feel comfortable in class, and I need, like, I don't want to be in class." I'm like, "First of all, why are you out of class in the office by yourself, and why is no one tending to you?" So I said, "Let's call the teacher and see what's up." I called, she's like, "Oh, okay, I finally get to the bottom of this." And I'm like, "You're finally getting to the bottom of it, and it's going on like two weeks now." So I reached out to Mr. Huberins to mediate the situation between him and my sister, and she, I haven't gotten a phone call since. So just in that, that I can call Mr. Huberins for him to make my sister feel comfortable, that means a lot to me. The school needs consistency, and it hasn't had proper administration in a while. And Mr. Huberins has been there for eight years, and I feel like he will be the best person for this position. So, thank you.
My name is Tiana Starks. I am also an alum of Global Communications Academy, classes 2017, and I'm also a junior at Trinity College. My major is sociology, my minor is community action. Okay. I would like to start off by saying that I've known Mr. Brandon Huberins ever since sixth grade, and he has made sure that I felt comfortable and respected at the school. He taught me the importance of reflection, leadership, and mental support. And if I do say so myself, it took me a long time to realize to ask for help, and if it wasn't for him, I probably would have never. And I refuse to act like I am okay with the decision that was made. During my senior year at Global Communications Academy, I was going through a lot of depression and anxiety because of the amount of unfortunate events and harassment that had taken place and weren't resolved. Because I did not feel comfortable going to administration at the time, I sought help Because he noticed that I needed an outlet. Because he noticed that I needed to find an outlet to find peace, he made me the manager of Elite Percussion, where I gained the skills to be a leader at Trinity College. Mr. Huberins helped my family during Move-In Day at Trinity and still checks up on me day-to-day. During times that I felt like I didn't belong, even at Trinity, he has encouraged me to keep pushing. If it wasn't for him, I don't even know if I would be at Trinity at the moment. Because of his continuous support, I gave him the title of being my school dad. Thank you.
My name is May Martin. I'm a grandparent of a student at Global Community Academy, where Mr. Huberins is the teacher. How I got involved in the school there with Mr. Huberins is through a program he had, Elite Percussion Drum Line. My granddaughter joined about three years ago, and I became a volunteer there. Today, I'm here to provide some personal insight for you about Mr. Huberins. I came to know Mr. Huberins through the Drum Line program and who has been involved with Mr. Huberins' program for three years, my granddaughter, Amari Clements. Mr. Huberins is a very committed professional and well-respected by both the students and parents. He is extremely passionate about the extracurricular programs he provides for the students at Global. Through the Elite Percussion Drum Line program, he has provided a number of enriching development opportunities to our students, such as community service through community day activities. He has gave exposure to college and post-high school educational opportunities through performances and engagements that we've done at Central Connecticut State University, St. Joseph University, and the convocation at the Yard Goats when, you know, they came about here. He's given them unique experiences which they wouldn't probably have an opportunity to have before, such as skiing and zip lining. We provide a lot of fundraising events. Mr. Huberins helps us with to help the kids to understand the financial cost to the support for the programs that are given at the school all the time. He's taken the kids to Bible studies and church activities, you know, outside of the school. He piled them up in his car and bring them there. He's a great part of the field day that we had this year. And quite frankly, if he has not been involved this year, I don't think it would have happened or been as successful as it was. Because of his dedication to the school programming, I have volunteered many hours with Drum Line as an advocate, and even sought through my job, I work for Travel's Insurance Company, because that program is so good at Drum Line that he worked with it, I looked for funding from Travelers to help with that program. And as you know, studies have shown us that when parents are involved in their kids' education, our students are much more successful academically and are goal-driven to pursue positive opportunities after high school, and Mr. Huberins has done that with those students. Mr. Huberins consistently do what's necessary to keep the students engaged as well as the parents. I really feel he has high regard for the well-being and success of our students. Some students being so active and engaged have shown a complete turnaround in their motivation and programs in school and their progress in school. Clearly, in my opinion, Mr. Huberins has gone out of his way to keep us, both parents and students, engaged while keeping us parents involved and in the know. And as we all know, high school is a real critical time to be in, and that's where my granddaughter, she's in high school now. So again, my purpose here today is to provide my support on Mr. Huberins' behalf. It would be such a huge disservice to students, teachers, and the school administration to lose such an invaluable resource as Mr. Huberins. Thank you.
Good evening, the good people of the Board and people of the school community and everyone else in the room. It's good to see people out to talk positively about somebody like Brandon Huberins. So I'm grateful for the opportunity to be a teacher at our school, and I try my hardest every day. But I'm also grateful for the opportunity to talk about this guy. I don't think I could speak as eloquently and as heartfelt as a lot of the people can. Here, I jotted a few ideas down from a teacher's standpoint. Clearly, he's a person of calm confidence. He is consistently professional, and his competence is way beyond the general expectation of someone in any position. Knowing this, it would be an incredible loss to, of course, the students are getting so much from him, but we as teachers, we look to him for that guidance in how do we anticipate what's going to happen next? What can he provide for our students in our classrooms that we as teachers in our classrooms can't necessarily do? The programs that he's put in place that students are involved in, they give him that unique in with some of the things that are not necessarily content-driven, that are really, really important to them. So we can't ignore that. If I can read my own writing, how about that? The programs he's established have been foundations for students seeking connections to the school. And as a learning community, which I bring up in my classes a lot, he's the embodiment of that effort. Also, there's a lot of value to a community that's bringing itself out to support an individual that they see as important to the school. A long time ago, we talked about site-based school management. Okay, maybe the term is come and gone, but as an essential idea to build a school upon, I think it's exemplified right here. So, you know, we have in our school right now a person who's experienced with students and staff. They really make him a clear solution to what we need, especially in terms of stability and consistency. So thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you. Mr. Huberins is someone who I've come to greatly respect while working side-by-side with him for the past seven years. Our school has been a revolving door each year, with new staff members entering our school just to leave a short time later. This problem is more prevalent in our upper grades. This leads to trust issues with students, and I do not blame them for assuming any new staff member will do the same. Schools should be a place to offer some sense of stability for our students. I have witnessed Mr. Huberins build an Elite Percussion program to the point where they were asked to perform at Hartford's convocation in spite of an absence of funding and instruments at the onset of the idea. This has given hundreds of students an outlet to feel proud and accomplished who would not have the opportunity otherwise. Along with other staff members at Global, I have been a volunteer athletics coach for the past three years. Mr. Huberins pushed us to develop the basketball program and offered guidance and assistance to us the entire way, as he knew what it was like to develop a successful program lacking resources. None of what I've mentioned to this point even falls during the school day, yet it resonates with students, staff, and parents during the school day because it shows the level in which he cares. This is why all of us are here. He organized the most amazing field day that our students could even fathom last year, getting thousands of dollars in resources, volunteers, people donating. He's one of the school's best resources for redirecting negative behavior, and he instills the tools to solve daily adolescent problems on their own in a safe way during his social skills classes. He's accomplished an incredible amount as a social worker, and he's clearly ready to improve our school in a different capacity as an administrator. I'm a middle school teacher at Global, and I can unequivocally say that he is the choice of students, staff, and parents. There was an opportunity to hire a person that the entire Global family knew would do everything in his power to make life better for our students. Our school losing out on someone like that is an absolute shame. As a sixth-grade teacher, Mr. Huberins would have been my direct administrator, and I was excited about that because working with him makes me a better teacher.
Good evening, Board members. My name's Kate Adams, and I've been a teacher within Hartford Public Schools for the past 11 years. I was a fifth-grade teacher at Global Communications Academy when it opened its doors in 2008, welcoming kindergarten, first, and fifth graders. And I became a third-grade teacher at Global Communications Academy when design plans decided to stop taking incoming fifth graders. I became a fourth-grade teacher at Global Communications Academy when design plans decided to relocate our school community to the old Fox Middle School building on Greenfield Street. And I was a fourth-grade teacher when we welcomed in and bid farewell to three different superintendents. I was a fourth-grade teacher when we were relocated again to Edward Street, and when our students and families lost the Say Yes partnership with the district, impacting many of their dreams of access to college scholarships and mentorships. I was a fourth-grade teacher when our students lost access to core arts programs such as dance, theater, and music due to budgeting cuts, and when the district decided to cut our high school program. I was a fourth-grade teacher when I first met Brandon Huberins as our social work intern and first worked alongside him when he was officially hired as our school social worker for grades K through 8. I was a fourth-grade teacher when I learned that despite the interview committee recommending Mr. Huberins for the position of Assistant Principal at Global, the district decided to place another candidate instead. When I first met Brandon, I quickly realized that he was more than just a school social worker. He had visions of providing more to our students and families. He took his love of percussion, grew at his alma mater, Alabama State University, and set out to share that love with our students. What started as teaching drumming skills and old floor tiles exploded into the birth of Elite Percussion. And over the past seven years, Brandon has nurtured this after-school club into Global's signature extracurricular program with absolutely no financial support from the district. Elite blossomed to include a Cleet Academy, which taught fundamental music skills such as reading and writing music, and it has its own dedicated Booster Club, which provides parents and families a network of support. It expanded to include an audiovisual program, a managerial leadership program, and a program to support students academically while being an elite. This year, Elite included nine core teachers, welcoming two HPS first-year teachers to share their ideas and visions. This team worked tirelessly to provide global community with a field day to remember, and that's just the tip of the iceberg. But all this happened because he had a vision. As our school social worker, he recognizes that students need access to more than just an after-school club. Yes, they need school activities to keep them busy, but they also need a network of adults looking out for them. They need an outlet to give back to their school community, and their families need a network to turn to when they need rides to events or help with a project. Imagine what he could do as an AP at Global. It's our students that deserve to reap the benefit of that change. Our staff, students, and families have always rolled with the punches that the district has handed us. However, losing Brandon Huberins to another HPS school would be a blow that would be irreparable short- and long-term effects to the school's culture and community. We've worked tirelessly and wholeheartedly to become the program we are today, Brandon and the programs he's implemented. Social skills instruction and Elite have provided our students with something the district has not: stability, arts education, social interventions, and family support. Please help us in any way that you can to keep him at Global in an administrative capacity. Thank you for your time and the extra time.
I am here today, well, tonight, to express the disappointment and hurt I felt when I learned that Mr. Huberins did not get the Assistant Principal position at GCA or Global Communications Academy. I was in disbelief because Mr. Huberins has been a dedicated counselor, teacher, and confidant to a lot of us students, a lot of the students and parents of Global Communications Academy. Mr. Huberins has organized so many positive initiatives, programs, and fundraising opportunities for GCA, is what we call it for short. He started Elite Percussion, where he introduced, exposed, and taught our kids and students how to play percussion instruments and how to read music. He gave our children an opportunity to learn something new that they could develop as a talent and help them further their education and secure scholarships. Our children were invited to perform at some great events and represented GCA in a positive light, all because of Mr. Huberins' efforts. He also created the Booster Club, which encouraged independent upon the support of parents of elite students and teachers. He relaunched the PTO and incorporated it with the Booster Club, elite parents, with the help of parents and teachers. We have held some great fundraisers and were We have had, have held some great fundraisers and worked together as a team. We were able to develop some great strategies and even started a student of the month award program. Mr. Huberins has been an advocate and a champion of GCA. He has increased parent and student engagement with the programs he established within GCA. Mr. Huberins has proven on countless occasions how dedicated he is to the students, teachers, and parents. He is the best candidate for this assistant principal position. Not to be funny, who is the other person? What rapport does she have with the students and parents? Mr. Huberins has a strong rapport with the students and the parents and has supported us immensely. Our children need him in the school. Him, Mr. Huberins, Brandon Huberins, they need him in the school. And showing them, you know, he, he, sorry, I lost my spot, excuse me. They need him in the school. They need a strong, melanated man guiding them and showing them you can be an educated too. Some of our students may not have a dad at home to be the example. Mr. Huberins is that example. Mr. Huberins is very deserving of the assistant principal position, and what I don't understand is why would the BOE not allow him to progress in events in his career and his school that he has been dedicated to and proved since his acceptance of the position eight years ago? Why is the BOE giving the opportunity to someone who left the school, and no one remembered or knows who that person is? Why is the BOE, you know, you know, why is he going through this? Why do we have to go through this? Why do we have to leave work or our part-time jobs or whatever just to come here to voice this? Y'all should have made the right decision from the beginning. He should have never been overlooked. I'm furious, and it's only because I'm passionate about what Mr. Huberins has done for our students and our school. And I trust him, my son trusts him, a lot of the other Global Communication parents trust him, and as you can see, teachers and administrators do too. So what I don't understand is why don't y'all trust him to do the job he's been trying and preparing to do this whole career?
Carol Gale?
Good evening, members of the board and superintendent. My name is Carol Gale, and I teach at the Global Communications Academy. I support the comments of the parents and teachers who have all spoken so highly of Brandon Huberins and concur that he is a marvelous asset for our Global students and families. Having learned that he was not chosen and that Nicole Jones was instead placed at Global begs the question, why? Why did the superintendent make this choice? Where's the transparency in this decision process? How is this putting students first? Where's the rationale for how this is in the best interest of the Global school community? Because what is in the best interest of a school community is stability. In the article, "The Impact of Teacher Turnover on Student Learning", quote, "Teacher turnover harms student achievement, discourages educators, and is expensive for districts." Lack of administrative support is one of the most frequently cited reasons why teachers quit. And teachers who perceive their administrators as unsupportive were more than twice as likely to leave compared to more well-supported teachers, unquote. Consider these facts. The Global's six-to-12 team had a 50% and higher teacher turnover in 2016 and 2017 when Nicole Jones was last there. The middle school leadership has changed four times in the last four years. In 2017, fifth-grade parents held an emergency meeting out of concern for the middle school program, and some chose to withdraw their student from Global despite losing Say Yes scholarship money. The middle school program has yet to stabilize. A successful school needs stability, and Mr. Huberins offers that as he has been a stable fixture at Global since its beginning. Additionally, what is in the best interest of a school community is trust. According to another article, "Principles: Trust in Cultivating Vibrant Schools", quote, "Inherent to a school culture that fosters student achievement is trust," unquote. Trust can only be developed over time and through relationship building. Mr. Huberins works closely with the elementary school and clearly has their support and trust. He developed Elite Percussion, as you've heard, for middle school students and employed the assistance of high school students as managers, capitalizing on the unique possibilities of a K-12 school. This broadened his relationships and trustworthiness. He further tackled the huge challenge of integrating programs across all grade levels in a K-12 school by organizing the most successful field day I have ever seen at Global. He brilliantly provided and organized fun activities for younger students as well as community service opportunities for high school students, and did this in a way that respected the needs and schedules of all three programs: elementary, middle, and high. No administrator has ever done that before, and he wasn't even an administrator when he did it. That's effective and trustworthy leadership. What is in the best interest for Global is keeping Mr. Huberins a trusted and stable staff member. So again, I ask why? Why are Global students not coming first? Either give us a transparent understanding of how the superintendent's choice serves Global better, or reconsider your position and reinstate Mr. Huberins. Our students deserve it.
Olga Perez? Or Ploga Perez? Okay, next we have a group of students from Global.
Good evening, superintendent. Good evening, superintendent and esteemed board members. Uh, my name is Tira Corwell, and I have...
My name is Quadell.
My name is Kumari.
My name is Lila.
My name is Dion.
My name is Natalie.
My name is Alexandra.
And you can hear from the Global school community, teachers, parents, and all concerned citizens and representing Brandon that he has contributed a vast number of resources to our school. However, we left one important element out. He is also an amazing social skills teacher. And I want you to close your eyes before I begin to identify where I am going to direct, direct this pathway towards, close your eyes for a minute. Imagine walking in a building, and the first person you come to, you inquire, who is Mr. Huberins? And they'll tell you, oh, he's the social skills teacher. Walk over to the next person, any student, pick any student in our school. Who is Mr. Huberins? Oh, he's the social skills teacher. That's what made me come out, knowing that I am on disability with a back injury. When I found out that Mr. Huberins had invested all those years and sat on an O-92 assistant principal position and was waiting for an opening at Global School, tears came to my eyes because after 28 years, I couldn't imagine anything like this happening in my lifetime, that somebody would literally wait for a school opening and not take a position anyplace else. So I want to share for a second with just inquiry about social skills and hoping that my students don't have stage frights and the students of Global Communication School don't have stage fright, stage fright. But Quadell, can you share anything that you learned or remember about social skills?
I learned that he told us all the rules of...
Okay, we'll come back then. Kumari?
I learned about no bullying and... And always doing your homework, your social skills homework every day.
Right. Dion?
Oh, I learned about, I learned about empathy, bullying, and how to put yourself in other people's shoes.
Can I, um, enunciate that a little louder? She said she learned about...
Empathy.
Empathy.
Bullying.
Bullying.
And putting yourself in other people's shoes.
And putting yourself in other people's shoes. A lot of adults don't do that before situations arise. What did you learn?
I learned how to be more respectful to other people and, and to understand like what people are going through in middle school and in elementary school.
I learned that you can't resolve everything by fighting, and you have to speak with your words or it won't resolve nothing, and there'll just be more anger and confusion with fighting, you have to use your words.
And that's just a part, and I could honestly tell you that, uh, my two on the left were not coles, but I do believe they definitely have stage fright, and it's okay. But what I wanted to leave with you is that the fact that I know a person, and I have never really gone out my way to help an individual. But I think what's heart, heartwarming and what also at the same time breaks my faith in the school system is the fact that here it is, an individual had invested all his time, his resources, his hours into a school system, in a school, and yet, when it was time to now move forward and progress in his career, he's being held back. You cannot hold him back. He will leave us. He will get hired in another district, and he will be amazing. Is that what you want for our children? Do you want our children to lose a successful individual that has proven himself time and time again? All I'm saying is, don't let him slip away from us, and don't let him empower another district to go ahead, merge ahead of us. We have the capability to be one of the strongest districts in the nation. Why not let's start here? Why not let's invest into Mr. Huberins? Thank you for your time.
Lila Maynor?
Hi, my name is Lila. My twins Kumari and Quadell attend Global. Mr. Huberins has played a lot, a lot of important in their role in their school, schooling, excuse me. Um, all I hear when they come home from school is like, I'll ask what they do for the day. We were, it's Mr. Huberins and social skills, learning how to keep our hands to ourselves, to behave. What else, Quadell?
Always listening, doing homework.
Yeah. Keeping their hands to themselves, et cetera, et cetera. Last night, Ms. Corwell called us and asked us if we want to attend the meet, and they was jumping up and down. They both were saying, I was asking them, do y'all want Mr. Huberins to leave? Both of them saying, no, they don't want Mr. Huberins to leave. I asked them why. They told me Mr. Huberins was really, really nice. When they can be like, one of them will, because they're twins, they pick their days, like one will be good, and the next day will be the other one acting out. So Mr. Huberins would have one on Tuesday, and then maybe on Thursday he would have the other one. So I asked them last night, what did they learn from that? And Mr. Huberins, they say, Mr. Huberins don't play, and he get to the bottom of everything. So with that being said, they don't want Mr. Huberins to leave. They're used to him, they trust him, and they would like to see him stay.
Cassandra? Sorry, there was no last name, so just a Cassandra. Scott Clark?
Good evening, superintendent of Board of Education. I'm a member of the Classical Magnet Parent Senate and a member of the parent community. The decision to remove our acting principal and assistant principal this late in the summer leaves me feeling very uneasy with the process of finding a new principal. This will be our fourth principal since my daughter has been at school since sixth grade. At this point, last Thursday, we believed our community would be interviewing candidates for our new principal. Unbeknownst to us, and this falls under transparency, supposedly the meeting was canceled, and none of our SGC or parent community was told about the cancellation. Unacceptable. I canceled a family party to come to that meeting. Again, you needed to make sure everyone knew about it beforehand. At this point, I have no faith in the interim principal currently at our school, Mr. Anderson. While he was at our school, our suspension rates rose 140% under his tutelage. All he does at this point is walk around school and look for people to suspend and get rid of, get out of the building. That is what our classical community calls a bully. It needs to stop. It needs to stop now. Also, our principal is invited to all our parent senate meetings. He has not made himself available to any of our meetings, so we don't know during the time he was there, what happens at our school, if there's anything bad going on, if there's anything good going on. If he is to be the interim principal going forward, he needs to make himself available for our meetings. Thank you very much.
Sonia Walsh?
Good evening. I am a fifth grade teacher at Global Communications Academy, and tonight I'm going to be reading this letter on behalf of Ms. Sonia Wilcott, who is not only a parent and guardian at Global, but is there pretty much every day. Um, she's heavily involved with Mr. Huberins, and he's made a big impact on her family. Over the years, children at Global Communications Academy have had to accept whatever the district thought was best for them. Mr. Brandon Huberins is not just your typical employee. He has proven himself over the years that he is a well-qualified and a perfect fit for the position as the assistant principal for Global Communications Academy Middle School. The relationship that he has built with not only the staff, parents, and most of all, the students has been one that changed an entire community. Mr. Huberins brings forth a lot of assets to the GCA community that our students need on a day-to-day basis. He has professionally provided social, emotional enrichment to the GCA community. As I type... As I type, tears are formed in my eyes to know as a parent, grandmother, and aunt of seven students that are currently attending GCA, that we will be losing a valuable asset to the school. My children, grandchildren, nieces, and nephews feel very comfortable interacting with Mr. Huberins at all times. Mom, don't say anything, I'm gonna tell Mr. Huberins, he'll handle it. Or mommy, talk to Mr. Huberins, he'll know what to do. So, as a parent, I can't afford for my children to experience losing someone that means so much to them. He makes them feel safe and secure, along with teaching them effectively how to defuse any unwanted problems that may face. His techniques can help any person on any given day and he is always willing to help in any way he can. Drum line, social skills, behavior management, promoting and initiating positive activities such as school dances, Xbox challenges, and most of all, his creative idea for the 2019 field day. Mr. Huberins is extremely gifted in many areas. He takes initiative to identify problems, assist students, parents, and staff, and to devise resolutions in a swift manner when a problem arises. His excellent communication skills can turn any crisis situation into an educational learning experience. I have witnessed Mr. Huberins time after time conquer the best of our children, parents, and GCA community. I also commend him for being an excellent team player and with assisting Ms. Stone in every way he can. Mr. Huberins qualities and characteristics is what make him a worthy candidate for this position. Mr. Huberins not being chosen as assistant principal in Global Communications Academy will be very disruptive and disturbing and heartbreaking as a parent and member of the community and staff. When does the model, no child left behind, take place? If Mr. Huberins is no longer at GCA to provide his excellent service to the children of the Hartford community, the district needs to change its mission. Thank you.
Patrick Habersang?
Good evening. I'm here on behalf of the Breakthrough Magnet School School Governance Council. As parents and educators, we all want the best for our children. We want an environment where our children feel safe and inspired, engaged, and excited to learn. We desire places where they are comfortable being themselves and where they will learn to celebrate their uniqueness as well as appreciate and respect the uniqueness of others. We want educators that see the potential in each and every child, which will help them to see the potential in themselves and in others. We are so grateful that so many families have found that place for their children in Breakthrough Magnet School. Holly Gustafson has been an integral part of the continued success of BMS in achieving its goals in academic and social, emotional learning. She possesses excellent leadership skills, she is efficient and knowledgeable. She understands how to use data to see the big picture, then break down the information with her leadership team to determine the reasons for success or setbacks in order to plan for improvement. She continues to look for new and innovative methods, as well as reviving the tried and true methods to help teachers and students achieve success. Holly understands the importance of the entire team needed for school's success. She values every staff member, every parent and community partner, and has the desire to continue cultivating new and existing relationships. Holly makes herself visible and available, and most importantly, she listens with an open mind. She is authentic, honest, and effective. On behalf of the School Governance Council and the faculty and staff of Breakthrough Magnet School, I strongly recommend Holly Gustafson to the position of principal. Thank you.
Jeff Oller?
Good evening, board members. My name is Jeff Oller. I am a parent of students at Classical Magnet School and the Chair of Advocates of Classical Magnet, a nonprofit organization that focuses on providing support to CMS for student programs and activities. I want to let you know that all the parents involved with advocates do all the work they do for the benefit of the students at Classical. Receive no compensation other than want their children to have a thriving school environment, have no other selfish reason to be involved, other than we think this is the right thing to do. In case you are not aware, the common theme of budget cuts that have occurred at Classical Magnet over the last few years has become very upsetting to parents, students, teachers, and administrators. Over the last few years, there have been significant cuts to Classical's budget that have resulted in reductions in teachers and programs. For the 2019, 2020 school year, our budget has been reduced by $550,000. Our student population reduced by 6%, and our certified positions reduced by 6.5 individuals. Enrichment classes, which began as a four-day after-school program, have been reduced to twice-a-week midday event. Class trips are now limited to when students can pay some portion of cost. No major facilities work has been performed at the school. Most of our security cameras do not work, including our front door camera. We have damage to hallways, hallway walls, which have not been painted in over 10 years. For years, the gym floor has been in needed need of repair. That would include stripping, sanding, and resurfacing the floors. For our front door security officer, we have a volunteer student grandparent as the two security officers in the school must walk the halls. Only through our recent efforts in meeting with Hartford Public School representatives multiple times and with multiple follow-ups have we been able to get our front door buzzer repaired, a promise for a new camera system for which the wiring would not begin until the fall, a promise for certain areas and walls to be painted, and a promise to have the gym floor stripped and refinished, but not sanded to repair any damage or imperfections in the floor. The school gym and theater facilities are used by other schools and organizations, yet no additional maintenance or repairs are performed to account for this additional use. In our meetings, we have been assured by Hartford Public School representatives and the Regional School Choice Office representative that no intention to reduce or change Classical Magnet, there is no intention to reduce or change Classical Magnet. Yet, the actions of the RSCO and HPS indicate otherwise. Over the last few years, they continually draw less students for Classical, which justifies them reducing staff and budget. When questioning why Classical does not get an increase in students drawn in the lottery, which is the impetus for maintaining or increasing our budget, we were eventually told that schools will not receive any additional students if it results in decreasing our reduced isolation student percentage. Yet, a school such as Capital Prep, which has a reduced isolation percentage significantly lower than Classical, 8% compared to 16% in Classical, had a lottery draw this year that resulted in an increased student population of 121 students, 504,000 increase in its certified budget, and five additional certified positions. My question to the board is, when did it become rational for the Hartford Public School District to reward schools with low reduced isolation percentages by increasing the student population, teachers and funding, and penalizing schools that strive to maintain a much higher reduced isolation percentage? If the Hartford Public School District really wants Classical to thrive, then why did it stop the new principal interviewing hiring process three hours prior to meeting with the school governance committees? And why did they give us an excuse that the process would be too destructive to other schools because they would have to hire a replacement in the other school? Unless you are hiring from outside the district, wouldn't this process always have a chain effect on other schools? And isn't that what you would want to promote for teachers that want to move up in the district? If Hartford Public School wants Classical to thrive, then why do they give Classical a retired principal who has indicated to this parent that he had no interest in participating in discussions to improve the school? And based on what I have experienced, is not equipped to help the school regenerate itself as the lead Hartford Magnet School that it once was? How can Classical recruit reduced isolation students if Hartford Public Schools is reducing budgets, creating larger classrooms, and removing programs? How can Classical recruit reduced isolation students if our gym floor is in need of serious repair? How can Classical recruit reduced isolation students if we have no Latin teacher for our middle school when Latin is key to our classics theme?
Sir, please wrap it up. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Mr. Oller, you can submit that to Christina and we can receive it. Thank you.
Ian Oller. Hello, my name is Ian Oller from Classical Magnet School. I'm the Student Body Vice President. Continuing what was being said, how can Classical recruit reduced isolation students if we have no Latin teacher for our middle school when Latin is a key to our classics theme? How can we recruit reduced isolation students if we have a great library that cannot be used because we have no librarian? How can we recruit reduced isolation students if the student has an ongoing safety issue due to a lack of working cameras and shortage of safety officers? How can we recruit reduced isolation students if our IT infrastructure is obsolete? How can we recruit reduced isolation students if Classical loses its high school accreditation because we do not have the school leadership that would warrant us having such a prestigious designation? Based on all that has occurred, the contradictions of what we are being told in comparison to what is actually occurring, the reluctance for Hartford Public Schools to give Classical the bare minimum needed as a school, it appears that in reality Hartford Public School is trying to ensure that Classical fails. Since the Hartford Board of Education is responsible for providing oversight over the Hartford Public School office, we are formally requesting that it is being in a formal investigation into what we see as a systemic, persistent, and obvious bias against Classical Magnet School that is causing it to be treated differently that other Magnet Schools, hindering the school from meeting its mission and causing it to fail to meet the State Education Department and court-mandated chef requirements. As well as that, I started going to Classical in seventh grade and when I got to the school, I was welcomed with enrichment, Latin, and sports. The middle school in our school now has no sports for the middle school and if they do, they have no games at all or little to none. There was a track program when I first joined the school, which is non-existent now. There was enrichment after school so that we had more time during school for learning, which is non-existent now and now during school for that. In addition to that, my bad. What I want to really say is that we need a principal and assistant principal that have been working with the school for the longest so that they know the students and that they don't just come in and act as bullies, as was said before, and just give suspensions rather than helping increase the school climate so that we can have a nice place for the students to learn at. We cannot thrive in a school where the principals do not know the students and do not know how to handle the students. The moment my father told me that our school might get a new principal, that was probably the happiest moment I had all summer because for once it seemed like Classical might actually go somewhere and not just keep disappearing. Like, it feels as if the Board of Education is trying and Hartford Public Schools are trying to get rid of Classical from being a school anymore. And we cannot thrive in a community where it seems like we are just trying to be forgotten in a system that doesn't care about us.
Summer Patterson? Cheryl Tavas?
Good evening. You heard, my name is Cheryl Tavas. I'm the parent of a rising 12th grader who started at Classical Magnet School in sixth grade. I've served on the Governance Committee for over five years. I'm involved with Parent Senate and the Parent Thesping Group. I work recruitment fairs and open houses. I'm active with and serve as Secretary for Advocates of Classical Magnet, the nonprofit that Jeff Oller referred to before. I'm here this evening to express our SGC sense of disenfranchisement from having no option to disagree with the budget, to getting crickets when we didn't agree, to attending a meeting to be trained and then interview qualified internal candidates for our principal, only to be told there were no external candidates and that the process would be on hold and that we would have an acting principal for an undetermined amount of time due to the domino effect it creates in the school system. We felt like the rug was pulled out from under us. I want to urge Dr. Torres Rodriguez and the board tonight to allow us to interview the candidates uniquely qualified to serve as principal of our school and not force us to stagnate with an interim principal for an undetermined amount of time. Our school needs an active and engaged leader now and before the academic year begins. One who's versed in the Pythea model and who supports the classics and the value of a liberal arts education and can promote it. One who can promote the highest academic standards so that our performance scores improve and academic success becomes the norm once again. One who can select their own assistant principal and collaborate and inspire their staff so that we don't have the dysfunction we have witnessed over the past few years. One who can advance a recruitment strategy and increase our student population and reduced isolation percentage. One who's experienced and knowledgeable about restorative justice so that discipline causes the least distraction for our learning students and everyone knows the behavioral expectations. None of this will become reality with any of the current strategies being employed, which appears to me and to all of us to be a dismantling of our school in the name of equity. We have a real opportunity here to turn our school around. Let's not do the mediocre thing. Let's be bold and give Classical Magnet School, allow it to be the center of excellence that it should be and the center of excellence that we are espousing with Hartford Public Schools. Thank you very much.
Phil Tavas?
Superintendent and board members, good evening. I am the proud father of a rising 12th grader in Classical Magnet. In summary, our school has lost a significant percentage of its budget over the last at least three years. You have heard the detail of what's happening in the school and the huge needs that it has. The reason I am here tonight is to reaffirm the mission of the school, why it is important to keep it as part of the teaching establishments in Hartford Public Schools. I want to talk about classical education in the 21st century of smart screens and artificial intelligence. That's why I'm here tonight. So, in classical culture of ancient Greece and in the Greek Roman world, the term Pythea, the method that is classical is used, referred to the raring and education of the ideal member of the state. It incorporated both practical, subjects-based schooling, and the focus on the socialization of individuals. The practical aspects of this education included subjects that today we describe as liberal arts, rhetoric, grammar, and philosophy, as well as scientific disciplines as arithmetic and medicine. An ideal and successful member of the society would possess intellectual, moral, and physical refinement. So, physical education was also valued for the effect on the body and alongside with moral education, which imparted for the study of music, poetry, and philosophy. It's like reading the curriculum of Hartford Public School in Classical Magnet School, a member of Hartford Public Schools. So, what did that education offer? So, what did that education offer over the past eons? It offered an establishment, it offered a foundation for what our society is today in this and at least another continent on this earth. What we do today is we abolish the benefits of what classical education can do for Hartford Public Schools. And again, why is this so important? It is because those people 2,000 years ago did what they did by just looking around, ladies and gentlemen. They just observed the world, they drew lines on sand and on stones, and they exchanged ideas by having dialectic exchanges. Today, our kids are dealing with a torrent of data that comes through the screens and torrent of concepts that are coming and will come furthermore with artificial intelligence. What their brains need, they need the logic and they need the efficiency by which classics have created what our societies are today. You cannot let, you should not and cannot let Hartford Public Schools allow Classical Magnet to go down.
Hi. Before I start, I ask you to please put yourself in my shoes, the parent's shoes and the staff's shoes. It's great to hear about all the stories, all your stories about active role models, and I wish all the best to your school. However, many of our students in our school have yet to experience that. Most of seven of my 17 years has been spent at Classical Magnet, and it has become a place like home. I've grown up watching it struggle and strive, and today I want to discuss how we can make my school strive. Hello, my name is Angelica Tavas and I'm a 12th grader at Classical Magnet, and I've been a student there since 6th grade. I think I'm here to tell you why we need a permanent principal. We need a principal who is going to connect with the students on a personal level and help them to strive to be their best selves. What our school needs more than ever right now is school spirit and moral. It's such a sad thing to watch kids who once loved school become disappointed because they do not know what it's like to have a longtime role model. Many of my friends and peers have lost faith in our school system. A principal should ignite that love for school in every student and staff member, not extinguish it. On top of this, a principal's office should be a safe space, a place where students can go and find comfort and discuss issues without having worry. By having a permanent principal, it gives each student trust that they are dedicated to each one of us in our school and that they are doing what's best so that they can help us in any way they find capable, both inside the school and out. In my time at Classical Magnet, I will have had four principals. My hope is that I can spend my last year at Classical Magnet with the principal who's in it for the long run, not just for me, but for future students to come.
That concludes public comment. Thank you very much. We move on to reports. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Chairman Flores. I have just a few updates. One is just to highlight our Summer Bridge Program, which as some of you know is a partnership between Hartford Public Schools, the City of Hartford, and Capital Workforce Partners, offering our rising 9th graders residents of Hartford an academic and supplemental learning experience before they start their high school career. Particular focus has been placed on recruiting students who have one or more of what we call early warning indicators, including recurring absences, low test performance, suspension, course failures. Each student who successfully completes the Summer Bridge Program will receive a stipend, and we had projected about 400 students to participate in the program, opportunity for up to 700 to enroll, and we have 275 students that are enrolled in the program. This is a Monday through Friday opportunity for the students encompassing not only academic support, enrichment, social-emotional learning, and then community-based organization programming in the afternoons. That is one of our three experiences, opportunities that we have for students. This is in addition to our credit recovery program for our high school students and the early start program for the lower grades. One other item that I want to highlight for us is the closing out of the Learning Forward System Level Grant that is closing out this school year. It was this past school year. It was comprised of work that examined our professional learning model and reorganized our district's coaching model to centralize our coaches and align their work to our four priorities. You know, as part of this grant and the agreement, a presentation was required at the National Conference for Learning Forward, and the presentation focused on our district's journey of crafting our professional learning framework, and it was grounded on our instructional coaches, what we call our ELEAD model, as the high leverage point for building capacity in our adults throughout the district. We had our Assistant Director of Professional Learning, Anastasia DeFadeli-Dutton, who was also awarded the Corwin Publishers Academy Scholarship to engage in this work, and she will be in December attending a presentation and titled Gateway to Excellence: Assessing Professional Learning with Hartford. And it is to document and disseminate and share with other learners across the country the journey of a larger urban district like ours and setting the stage for an in-depth research-based session on effective professional assessment. And so, just want to highlight the fact that we're proud to be informing professional learning across the country. Want to also highlight that there was a total of $3.8 million that was awarding in school improvement grants, and the five schools that applied for that grant were Belizzi, Buckley, Burr, Parkville, and Hartford Public High School. And, you know, a variety of ways that those grants funds were leveraged, including the establishment of a dual-language committee research group at Belizzi to research and develop their dual-language program that will start, making sure that every classroom has a leveled library in multiple languages and culturally responsive texts. At Parkville, for example, additional faculty and staff were hired, including resource teacher, behavior technician, and a social worker. Burr saw the addition of an attendance case manager to target chronically absent students. Buckley leveraged some of the funds to prioritize academic vocabulary instruction and offered additional coaching sessions for staff and implemented their SAT Saturday Academy for students to receive additional supports. And an example of how the funds were leveraged at Hartford Public High School was to hire a college and career coordinator. And as you know, school improvement grant funds are through the State Department of Education. And the last highlight that I will reference is with regard to our Safe Schools. Staff members throughout the district have completed almost 24,000 Safe School training courses. The Safe Schools is a platform that allows us to easily track completion of our compliance trainings while also allowing us to customize trainings specific to the needs of individual staff members. Before adopting the Safe Schools platform and training model, we used to hold large group meetings for trainings and only 50% of the staff were taking the mandatory training. And after implementing this model for two years now consistently, we have 97% completion rate, and staff continue to take, individualize their trainings online in a way that's most convenient to them. And the reason why I'm highlighting this is because some of the benefits that include that are seen through this model is, of course, the compliance rate going up over 50%, and this is a goal that we surpassed, and it was in relation to the action plan that was in response to the Office of the Child Advocate Report. And we now have more efficiency in tracking the professional learning needs with regard to safety, compliance for our staff. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Board committees do not meet during July and August, so there are no committee reports. We move on to the business agenda. The first item on the agenda is an administrative appointment, a motion that the Hartford Board of Education approved the superintendent's recommendation to approve, to appoint Holly Gustafson to the position of principal at Breakthrough Magnet School South. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. I'm actually going to ask Ms. Gustafson to please join us up front along with Executive Director, Mr. Barton. This is Holly Gustafson's 12th year in Hartford Public Schools and 21st year in the field of education, following four years as a middle school health and character education teacher in Denver, Colorado, when she created and taught a school-wide character education program incorporating health and life skills. She earned a Master's of Arts in Administration and Supervision at the University of Phoenix in Denver. She then served for four years at the same middle school in Denver as a dean before her family moved from Colorado to Connecticut in 2006. She has taught middle school and high school health at the Bridge Academy Charter School in Bridgeport before joining us in 2007 as a 5th and 6th grade teacher at Breakthrough Magnet South, a character-themed-based magnet as we all know. After serving as a classroom teacher for four years, she transitioned to the role of the instructional coach and curriculum specialist at Breakthrough where she supported the entire school for the next four years. She then stepped into the role of the assistant principal where she led Breakthrough South alongside their former principal who has transitioned to Hartford Magnet Trinity College Academy, Julie Goldstein, for four years. And she has been an integral part of the core leadership team at Breakthrough, who has been recognized as a magnet school of excellence in America for, I believe it's five years in a row, including having been deemed as the Ronald P. Simpson Magnet School of Merit Award of Excellence in 2015, recognizing it as the number-one magnet school in America. Teach for America has also recognized Breakthrough as a national exemplar on school climate and culture, and Ms. Gustafson has been part of the team that has led through that work. And so, I present to you Ms. Holly Gustafson.
Good evening, Dr. Torres Rodriguez and Board of Education members. Thank you. It is with great pleasure that I introduce to you Mrs. Holly Gustafson as the candidate for Breakthrough South. Mrs. Gustafson is a longtime advocate of social-emotional learning and character education to support the whole student. During her 12 years at Breakthrough South, she has worked in partnership with Norma Newman-Johnson and Julie Goldstein to develop the school's theme, including mindfulness and restorative practices and approaches. Under her leadership, student learning has continuously improved, as demonstrated through our district common formative assessments, as well as the smarter balanced assessments. Mrs. Gustafson's twins attended Breakthrough for eight years and are now entering high school. Mrs. Gustafson's school-based accomplishments include the following: the creation of an innovative school-wide book series program, which supported the literacy growth of students across all grade levels; the creation of a Brick on the Bus Behavior Program aligned to the school's character theme to support positive student behavior in transportation; coming up with a creative operational solution to a recent enrollment challenge that came about through the Magnet Lottery for the upcoming school year. Besides Mrs. Gustafson's work at the school level, she has also shown leadership at the district level since 2013, most recently being a member of the Hartford Lead Coaches Cohort in the 2017-18 school year where she helped plan and facilitate all professional development for the instructional coaches in the district. Her other district work includes the following: becoming a member of the First Aspiring Leader Cohort in 2014, participating on a teaching and learning transition team to support common core implementation and district ELA workshops, participating in an SLO planning session for non-teaching positions, creating and leading professional development workshops for teachers on student engagement, participating in the district Team Coordinating Committee to support new teachers, and assisting in drafting a guide for building-based new teacher support, facilitating Team Module 5 workshops for new teachers across the district. In summary, Mrs. Gustafson is a talented and passionate leader. She builds the capacity of others and is deeply committed to students, to Breakthrough as a school, and to the Hartford District and community.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. Are there any questions from board members or comments? Yes, Ms. Oliver?
Hi, it was nice to meet you earlier, and I know we didn't have a lot of questions then, but as we've heard tonight, we talked a lot about the importance of leadership at the school and supporting staff, parents, and students. What can you share with us or would like to share with us and the others in our audience about some of your thoughts and philosophy if you get in this position?
Sure, specifically about supporting?
Supporting staff. I mean, I'm doing staff, students, and families, but just in terms of some of the stuff that you heard tonight that you think really resonated with you.
Sure. Well, I think it's vitally important to have a strong SGC and partnership with your school community because that is your school community, the parents, you know, the parents, the students, the staff, even your community partnerships. It's vital that everybody is on the same page. You're transparent as a leader so that whatever decisions you're making, you're not making it solely by yourself, but you're getting input from everybody that's a stakeholder, you know, as also with the district, you know, being in partnership with Hartford Public Schools. So, that's important. I am lucky because I've been at Breakthrough for 12 years, so we have a really, really strong, tight-knit community. And, you know, every year you get new families. We're a magnet school, so you do have families leaving and coming, and so it's important to always be present, make sure that every new member of Breakthrough feels welcome, feels like they have a voice. And then, being a pre-K through 8th grade school, I think it's really important to have our older, all students, but especially our 5th through 8th graders have voice and choice, because the more that they have that and they have that buy-in, they're going to feel more committed to the decisions that are made at the school and feel more tied to the school.
Any other questions? Ms. Carter?
Just tied to, hi.
Hi.
Just tied to that particular question, I would just love to hear, being with your 12 years of experience of being in the school, what are some of your techniques of reaching out outside of the SGC, of integrating some of our parents that might not necessarily be a part of the SGC and/or guardians or the support systems that are there to support our young people?
Yeah, definitely. Great question, because you're right, there's a small percentage of parents that might be involved in SGC and/or PTO. Again, I feel blessed because our school is small. It's only 350 students total, pre-K through 8th grade, and so often we will have parents starting, and, you know, we'll know some families over 10 years. So, that being said, myself, my leadership team, it's important to be present. So, being there at arrival every morning, talking to parents, talking to family members, talking to guardians, communication, being transparent, using our, we use social media, we have a Facebook page, we have our website. I think that the communication piece is huge, and then just reaching out. So, I feel lucky that we were able to gain a new staff member this year, a new position, which is the family and community support position. We haven't had that at Breakthrough for several years, so that person can help with reaching out to families that maybe do feel like they don't have as much of a voice. And then... Um, and then we do things like, um, informal surveys throughout the school year, not just wait till the school climate survey because that's only once a year in the spring. Obviously, using that data to get feedback from our families and our guardians, but using times where we have family events in the evenings. We have weekly community meetings every Friday, so inviting families, um, and we alternate that. So one week, uh, a first and second grade class might be leading community meeting, the next week it might be middle school, and then you're, you know, inviting family members, uh, friends to come and see their children at community meeting. They may be performing a song, they may be talking about what they've learned, and so it's a great way to bring families in, and it's real informal, and it's built into the, the fabric of our school.
Anyone else? So then, do we have, uh, a motion to, uh, approve Ms. Gustafson's appointment?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And the ayes have it. Congratulations, Ms. Gustafson. Is there anything you'd like to say?
Yes, thank you. Um, I'd like to thank Chairman Flores and Dr. Torres Rodriguez and the board for your appointment, as well as the Breakthrough Magnet School South SGC for the recommendation and just the, um, Breakthrough community in general and everybody that came out to support. I'm so grateful and humbled to be named the next principal of Breakthrough South and is truly a dream come true for me. I have grown so much over the past twelve years in Hartford as an educator and a leader, and I attribute that to the incredible support and training that I've received at the district level, as well as the leadership mentoring I received at Breakthrough from Norma Newman-Johnson, the founding principal, Julie Goldstein, Maritza Soto Gomez, our mindfulness leader and social worker, and Katie Leonard, who is now the principal at Breakthrough North, as well as countless others. Anyone who's stepped foot into Breakthrough South can immediately see and feel what makes our community such a special place, and this is thanks to our students, families, staff, and community partners that believe in Breakthrough. We often say that our theme, character education, is the air we breathe at Breakthrough, and I'm proud to say that I've worked tirelessly over the last twelve years to build the relationships and model the high expectations and strong character as a leader in our school community. I'm also grateful for the work over the last four years that have helped, that I've been privileged to do alongside Julie Goldstein. She has helped prepare me for the role that I'm stepping into. I am committed to maintaining the vision and mission of Breakthrough Magnet School South, as well as a partner of Hartford Public Schools and supporting the district model of excellence, and I'm so excited to be the new principal of Breakthrough Magnet School South. Thank you again.
Thank you, and congratulations. The next item on the agenda is the contract renewal for CBS Therapy. The motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorized the superintendent to execute contract with CBS Therapy for the term delineated in the contract at an amount not to exceed nine hundred eighty-one thousand, six hundred thirty-one dollars, ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. I will ask, uh, Dr. Sellers to join us and stay up here for quite a while. CBS Therapy is the, uh, leading provider of school-based therapy services in New England. They provide temporary and permanent staffing for speech and language pathologists, occupational therapists, and physical therapist assistants. Uh, speech and language pathologists have been designated by the state, as we all know, as a shortage area, so it is necessary for us to utilize, uh, this service to ensure, uh, compliance with not only federal but state special education, uh, mandates.
Good evening.
Good evening.
That was for you, by the way. I remain humble.
Are there any questions for Dr. Sellers?
Um, the reason why most of us are pretty quiet, we asked a lot of the questions, um, prior to you coming.
Sure.
Just wanted to see your face, so.
I know, nice to see everybody.
Uh, is there anything you'd like to tell us about the contract?
Um, I think I provided some talking points for Dr. Vasquez Matos, who I believe met, uh, with some of you on Thursday.
Yes, he did.
Um, we, we do, um, I don't know if you want to talk about CBS or do you just want to talk about all the contracts in general at this point?
CBS.
Okay. Um, so, no new information on CBS? They've been providing us a solid, um, you know, roster of speech and language pathologists. They have a very good reputation with their staff, so they, you know, maintain that consistency and will continue to utilize them. We do use them also for teletherapy, and they provide very comprehensive service in providing all of the electronic equipment and really just great support.
And, uh, as a comment, and I, I think, uh, the superintendent, uh, referred to this, but, uh, this is actually required services that we have to provide to our special education students and that there is a great shortage of professionals in the field. We have been unable to recruit permanent staff, so this is why we rely on, uh, provider to give us these services.
Correct, and it is a national shortage.
Yeah.
Uh, just a quick question. I noticed in the talking points, thank you, Mr. Chair, was that this is, um, we are contracting for eight and a half FTEs, uh, and would like to build in an additional four FTEs. So is this for eight and a half or is this for twelve and a half? It's at the, uh, the last paragraph in the talking points.
So you're looking at, are you looking at the one pager?
Uh, yes, the one pager, yep.
Mm-hmm.
It's the last bullet point.
So that's related, yeah, my apologies, that's related to the Cumberland contract?
It says CBS Therapy on top.
Oh, I'm looking at the very bottom where it says evaluation of strategy and proposed changes?
No, that's a different one. Uh, I think you're looking at a different one. Uh, the one I'm looking at says CBS Therapy right at the top, talking points, the amount. No worries if you don't have it in front of you. It is. Yeah, it's, it's an attachment on board docs. If you don't have it in front of you, don't worry about it.
So Christina, is that in the scope of services?
No, it's not.
No?
No, yeah.
Oh, okay, so.
But, but the scope of services helps me because it says eight and a half FTEs.
Eight point five, right.
Okay.
Yep, that is correct.
And it, and I think it was just in the talking points that in a perfect, I think you're, you, in the talking points, it was saying, "We would like to build in an additional four, but the actual contract is for eight and a half."
Yeah, I'd have to go back.
Got it, no worries.
The scope is, the scope is eight and a half?
Yes.
One, one thing that came up last time we reviewed, uh, this contract was with regard to, uh, having additional hours, for example, that might be necessary if, say, students per their IEP changes would require more than what we already have and what the implications would be if it goes beyond the eight point five.
I'm actually a little, I guess I'm reading it slightly differently. Um, it's because it's stating, "We have nine positions currently filled and would like to build in an additional four FTEs to plan for retirements, resignations, and additional mandated students." So it does read as if it's more than the eight point five that we're searching for, that it is the twelve point five. So I'm, I am concerned if we're looking to contract, even though it states in the scope of, a scope of services of eight point five, but it's stating here, the way it's written, it could have just been miswritten as if it's, we are seeking twelve in the idea of it being for retirements, resignation, whatever, so forth.
All right, and I can check that. So Christina, you say that's an attachment that, that Karen Ross provided?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that might be the case. Because my, my understanding is it's eight point five.
Yeah, no, the, the scope of services answered my question. I should have opened that first, but I.
Right.
Um, but the, the, but definitely, as Ms. Clark said, the, the, the talking points made it a little confusing, that's why I wanted to ask.
Sure.
Because of the fact that the scope said eight and a half and the, the talking point said an additional four, so, but I'm, I'm all good on my questions, Mr. Chair.
But to be clear, the contract is for eight point five.
For eight point five. The current contract in front of you now, yes.
Any further questions? Is there a motion to approve this contract?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of, any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, the contract is approved. Next is the contract for Cumberland Therapy Services. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorized the superintendent to execute contract with Cumberland Therapy Services for the term delineated in the contract at an amount not to exceed eight hundred, I'm sorry. Yes, eight hundred seven thousand, six hundred eight dollars, ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. Uh, Madam Superintendent?
Yes, and same service delivery, I'll have Dr. Sellers speak to that as well.
Right, so we had, um, with Cumberland, um, and this is hot off the press, so since you actually received your brief on Thursday, they have an additional five SLPs available for us, so that will be a total of nine new and returning SLPs from Cumberland. So, um, this will allow us to provide speech and language services at an additional twelve schools. Um, it'll definitely positively, positively and significantly impact our goal of being fully staffed with SLPs at the start of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. So, so that's a, you know, uh, that's a, that's a goal that, um, you know, that we know is bold, but, um, we're going to do everything we can to make it happen. So, and it'll also allow us to, um, provide compensatory services for students who may have missed some services last year, um, due to a vacancy, and we're, we're in the process of auditing that. Um, it'll definitely help us meet our targets for the growth of our I-Go program because one of the candidates is highly experienced with students with autism, uh, so we're, uh, very excited about that. And of course, it'll, you know, reduce, um, instances of state complaints and, and legal action related to mandated services not being provided to students. So, um, so that's the reason for the, you know, the increase in the very, you know, in just a few days, but, uh, we're excited that they're able to provide us with additional staff.
And just to always clarify with regard to, these have been already earmarked in our budget.
Oh, yes.
Um, given that, uh, if we had the FTEs, um, then we wouldn't need this service.
Right, so these funds have already been allocated to schools for the, the amount of FTE, uh, for their SLP position, so the salary lines will be moved to the contract line, um, not requiring any additional funds.
Even with the increase, with the recent increase, it's, it is still falls within the budget.
It does, because there is a cost savings with using the agency SLPs. When you look at hiring a full-time person with fringe benefits, um, it's, it's definitely a cost savings.
Any other questions?
Um, just a, just a clarifying part for me. Um, so, and again, it could just be, like you said, it's more of the timing. So what we received before with the talking points and the amount that's on that, obviously there's a, a substantial increase, and that's due to the additional.
The additional five.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve this contract?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Next up is a contract with Soliant Health. The recommended action, motion that Hartford Board of Education authorized the superintendent to execute a contract with Soliant Health for the term delineated in the contract at an amount not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars, ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty.
And our last.
Yes, Madam Superintendent?
Um, our last service provider for speech and language, um, support, Dr. Sellers?
Okay.
And can you also, while you, um, give an overview, speak to, um, whether this among the three is the one that if we don't need to, um, use all of the services, then what?
Right, so this is, this is, um, one, a contract that we executed last year as a part of our strategy to sort of, you know, have a contract ready and available so that we could quickly, um, you know, garner staff that was available and not have to go through a prolonged process of contract negotiation, which often, you know, individuals end up taking other positions, um, because of the delay. So, so Soliant, um, we contracted them, uh, I believe, last year for the first time. They've done a great job for us. Um, so we'll continue to have that, that five hundred thousand just sort of, uh, pot so that when they have additional candidates, we'll be able to, to quickly bring them on board.
So to clarify, what we're saying is not that we're going to be using all of these services, but we have three providers to be sure that we can recruit the people that we need at the time that we need them without having to go through an approval process.
Right, and, and when we're available, we don't lose them because of a prolonged, uh, you know, process of going through contract. So, so that, that, those funds, I think we're currently, I believe the talking points I provided, um, we, last year, we spent a hundred and thirty-one thousand, one twenty-seven, seventy-eight with Soliant, so we, um, you know, have room for a few positions in there, and that money, that, that, um, that contract amount is just available, again, for that salary line to quickly be moved to a contract line in order to bring somebody on board.
I think what's most important there is that there will be, uh, little to no wait time in terms of service delivery to students.
Exactly.
Which is number one driver.
Um, so one more, so one point that we brought up in the meeting where, um, we did discuss this was just so that, and then, and, um, through the chair, we stated this, it's just that we're not, through the three contracts, we're not going to exceed, it's not going to look as if we're doing, um, close to two and a half million. We're actually going to not exceed a certain amount. Am I correct in stating that?
Not the way the contracts are currently written. We wouldn't exceed any amount that's in the contract.
Right, but that's looking at the contracts individually and however, and I guess maybe, um, for me, it's more of a clarity purpose, all three of the contracts won't, we were not, we're not going to exceed all three contracts at the same time.
I want to make sure I understand what you're asking. So, so we wouldn't, so we, we have, um, Cumberland Therapy to eight hundred and seven thousand. We have CBS Therapy for the specified amount.
Mm-hmm.
So you're asking, are you asking, for instance, with Soliant, would we ask for an increase? Would we ask for an addendum to, to increase the contract if they had more candidates for us?
No, not necessarily addendum. So from my understanding, and maybe I understood it incorrectly, was that although we're doing all three contracts, that we are not going to fulfill the amount that's executed in all three contracts. So we're establishing the three contracts so that there will not be a delay in services. However, we know that there will not be, um, under, let's just say, Salient, we know that we will not spend five hundred thousand, but we are designating that amount so that there will not be a, a delay in services. But we will never go up to the five hundred for Salient, we won't go to the highest for CBS, and we won't go to the highest of the other one.
It, it's just the third one, that we're leaving the, the cushion, for lack of a better word.
Right. So I thi, I think it's possible, though, that they could have candidates that would bring us to the amount of the contract. For instance, if we're at a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars now and, and they have three or four candidates for us, then we would, you know, we'd have room in the contract. We, we could go all the way up to five hundred thousand. We couldn't go over without asking for an addendum if they had additional positions available for us.
I can rephrase Ms.
Thank you.
Clark's question. As we discussed at the leadership meeting, the sum of the contracts is greater than what we anticipate spending, but we have all the contracts so we can have the freedom to draw, uh, when the need arises and the candidates are available from whichever of the three providers. providers.
Do you want to rephrase that one more time? Because we currently have, given the amount of candidates we have now, even with all the contracts, we have about seven vacancies to fill. Now, those are for different amounts of FTE at different schools, so we, I want to make sure I understand what you're saying. So we could, you know, exhaust the 500,000 in the Soliant contract.
Yes, in a one contract.
In an attempt to fill those additional positions that are needed.
But you have a total budget for what you're going to spend for this purpose, which is less than the sum of all these contracts. Is that correct?
I think the way the superintendent explained it made sense, at least to me. Right, so the first two contracts, the ones that are already voted in, there is no, there is no cushion. They will be spent, every dollar will be spent.
Right, every dollar will be spent.
It's this item that we, that you are requesting $500,000, as with the cushion, they are knowing that last year you only spent 130-something thousand dollars. So this is the one where we're leaving a cushion in case they have other folks that we can hire because services are needed, right?
Right, so there is a cushion in there.
So the first two are going to be spent no matter what. Every dollar will be spent.
Yes, every dollar.
It is this item where we could potentially save some money if there is savings to be had.
Right, but I just want you to understand, we could possibly get a call next week from Soliant.
Absolutely, but we could spend every dollar.
Saying they have candidates that would take us all the way up to that $500,000 amount.
And I guess, and I guess that's where the confusion is lying, because from our understanding is that, I understand the whole cushion aspect of it, however, the cushion was over what was on the budgeted amount for this particular service.
For speech and language pathologists.
Correct. That was what we, that was kind of how it was presented to us. So, and let's just take this, I'll have to use a different scenario. So let's just say speech and therapy services were, the allotted amount was $1 million. However, we're going to go into contract for a million and a half so that we will not have delayed in services with the understanding that we are not going to exceed $1 million.
Okay.
But based on what's discussed right now, it's, we're going into contracts knowing that we're going to exceed the amount that's allocated, and that's kind of what I'm hearing.
Okay, so, thank you for rephrasing it at additional time. So we wouldn't exceed the amount that's currently in those salary lines. The amount that's in those salary lines of positions that are currently vacant, we would not exceed that amount. But, but we're looking for a cushion, like as you said, with those vendors, those providers, so that we had room in each one, because one's going to have two, one's going to have one, and we never know when candidates are going to be available. So I understand your question now. So we would never exceed the total budgeted amount for district SLP services. Even though the amount of the contracts sitting there, you know, the ones that were, that have the cushion, even though they might appear to be over that amount. I understand what you're saying. Thank you for clarifying.
And that was the concern, that the control is the budget, it's not necessarily the contracts.
Got it.
Thank you.
Okay, and this is just a comment, just because I'm putting out there. So we're saying that for the SLP, under our budget line, that we're not, that we're not exceeding the 1.3 that's allocated in the budget for that.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Oliver.
So I wonder if we find that we have more students with more needs. So I understand the question and I agree, because I was fortunate to be able to be on that phone call with the talking points to try and talk this through. But if we find that we have more student need, then there is a possibility, unfortunately, we may be going over this 1.3 million dollars. And at that point, what this has done is giving you some tools, because we have diversified our supplier network, basically, to be able to try to quickly get those services to those young people. So while we definitely have some projections, I think we have to acknowledge that there is a possibility, because this is based on need, on special, right?
There is a possibility, absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And to that, through that, I completely agree. I just did not want us voting on a budget without knowledge if we are exceeding prior to actually doing it. So that was just where the clarity was coming in. I did not, I would not feel comfortable voting for something that we knowingly going over budget.
Got it.
Versus, this is what happened based on the needs of our young people within the school.
Got it, thank you for clarifying in additional time.
Oh, is there a motion to approve this budget, this contract?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, the contract is approved. Thank you, Dr. Sellers.
Okay, you're welcome. Always a pleasure to come before you.
We come to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to take up the consent agenda as one item?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of taking up the consent agenda as one item signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That we will take up the consent agenda as one item? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The consent agenda is approved. And now we have a personnel matter that we need to discuss in executive session related to a contract non-renewal. Do the representatives come, or is it also the law? Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So we will go into executive session and we will invite with us the superintendent, Dr. Leslie Dotis Rodriguez, and attorney Lori Mazrak. Oh, I'm sorry, the superintendent is not coming, only your attorney. Okay, is there a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor coming out of executive session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, we are now out of executive session. And the recommended action before us, motion that the Hartford Board of Education adopts the findings of fact and recommendations of the board's subcommittee and authorize the non-renewal of the employment contract of the non-tenured teacher identified below. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, the motion is approved. And of our agenda, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We are adjourned. Thank you.